Yeah, because we've been here since 4:30, so meeting adjourned. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda on Monday, October 5th. And would you please stand while Vice Mayor Lortano says the pledge allegiance and invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unalienable, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, please give us counsel wisdom to make the decisions that will help our community to better itself. Please watch those and protect those that protect us at home and abroad. And please share your grace and your comfort with those suffering in Oregon and along the east coast and South Carolina. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lortano. And we are all here, so we'll just go on to the communications. We have two items tonight. The first one is an update on the intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Department of Transportation regarding the asphalt overlay of Perryville Road from Van Buren Street to Arizona Department of Transportation right-of-way. Rebecca, you have been up many times. Listen, you should get extra pay for tonight. You've really put a lot of extra hours in. So Rebecca Zook, our engineering director, to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And yes, I'd like to provide you an update on this project. We had come before council in December for an approval for an overlay, which was a county-funded project, part of their special project fund, which got approved by them in the September 14 timeframe. And then we came to council in December. And we moved forward with looking at the design of that roadway. And within short order, we realized that the annexation of that roadway was going to be problematic for us. So let me just, the extent is south of I-10 down to Van Buren. And I just want to show some detail that explains the problematic annexation. So it's a little bit difficult to see on here, but it was, the city's strip is the yellow strip along here. But what we had not realized, whoops, what we had not realized is that for almost 20 different properties, there was a small strip of private property along that extent of the roadway. And we quickly got into conversations with McDott about the time and effort that would be involved in those almost 20 annexations. And through those conversations with McDott, we shared with them our concerns about meeting the timelines of that roadway. And they concurred that that was some, an unknown that had come to light and that we were not the only municipality that had had similar concerns with the timeline. And in fact, from those various conversations we had with them, they are considering postponing the program for some time. But what I wanted to share with you this evening is in September, we did move forward with sending them a letter to say that we would not be doing this project as a city because of this constraint.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Oh, sorry, a change of mind. Councilman Stip.
Have we invested anything in this?
Nothing beyond looking at it. We proposed the application in the fall time, staff time.
Staff time? Forty hours, 20 hours, 140 hours?
I would say probably 40 is a good estimation.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Rebecca. The next item of communications, discuss the strategy and reexamine the Loma Linda Park Master Plan in light of the Curtain Parks Recreation Trails Open Space Master Plan adopted July 2014. Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director, to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I was sure to ask Rebecca if I could borrow her microphone this evening. She said I could. The Loma Linda Master Plan was completed in August of 2010, and at that time, it was adopted by city council. The master plan was completed in partnership with St. John Vianney, that actually neighbors the park site. And they actually contributed up to $20,000 for the master plan in 2010. In April of 2015, I was informed by St. John Vianney that they had secured Shea Homes as a funding partner to continue with improvements on their site, specifically to erect a multipurpose facility that would border the park, which is located there in that yellow box. Given this development, St. John Vianney has requested that we revisit or revive the master plan from 2010 in hopes of complementing improvements on both sides, both sides. Given this development and per our Parks Recreation Trails and Open Space Master Plan that was adopted last year, staff will reexamine the Loma Linda Master Plan to confirm the benefit to the community, the stakeholders, and St. John Vianney. So as part of this approach, as part of this approach, we are inviting the Goodyear Historic Neighborhood out to join us for a day at the park this Saturday, October 17th, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. Festive day at the park to include puppet show, activities for kids, refreshments, inflatables. And yes, while they're there, we hope to get some feedback from them on the master plan. Really, we wanted to, we're choosing this approach because we wanted to make sure we got a good spectrum of engagement from actual park users. Sometimes at public meetings, the participation is limited. So this, in this approach, we hope to gather families and actual park users, get them there for a day of fun, and also take that opportunity while we have them to survey them and ask questions and give them opportunities to comment. So this will be taking place October 17th, 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Loma Linda Park. We've got a great day of festivities planned. The church will also be there with us as well and other community members. We will also be collecting survey data in the coming weeks at the park. So during the day, we'll get some data samples, during the evening, weekends, daytimes, evenings, to make sure that we get a broad spectrum of input for the plan. And really, what we're trying to do is make sure that what existed in 2010 still is meeting the needs in 2015. And in order to have a responsible approach from our department on this, before we bring something back to you for funding consideration, because the plan is five years old, we want to make sure that the public truly understands what's in the plan, what impact it will have, and make sure that it still holds to the benefit of the community. And so, just providing you the information.
Thank you, Nathan. Any comments, Councilman Lortano, Vice Mayor Lortano?
Nathan, I do appreciate the fact that you're going out and getting, because it is an older plan. I do have a question. On that last map you put in, where it says fenced in, the green area is fenced in, was that part of the original plan?
Councilmember Lortano, Mayor, that you are correct. That is one of the elements that was part of the original master plan here. And you can see this red area did anticipate a fenced area. And that fenced area would go on this northern part of the park. That's one of the things that we really want to clarify with the residents, to make sure that they truly understand
What that means.
what the impact is, and that, yes, there is a fence that will go up. And this does mean that there may be some restricted access during school hours if the church is using that site. And in addition to that, there is some landscaping that may be relocated or may have to come down to make way for this. So again, it's just making sure that the public understands, you know, what this plan truly means and if the benefits still hold true.
Was that in the original? Because I don't remember, it's been so long.
Correct, yes. It was in the original plan.
And so that would mean that the citizens during school hours, basically, because it has to be, I guess, an enclosed area for the school, couldn't use that at all during the school hours?
That's one of the things that was contemplated in the original plan, yes.
Thank you. Councilman Osborne? Oh, I didn't see Bill, so I called on you. Well, get Bill next, thank you.
Nathan, thank you for bringing this to us. We know this has gone on for quite a long time, and I appreciate that there's some interest to continue the cooperation. I guess my question is, since this is a collaboration between the city and St. John Vianney, have you reached out to the city of Avondale? Because it's quite frankly also an economic driver for them. And so I think to connect the full partnership, we really do need, and funding, we need to talk to the city of Avondale, too, is my thoughts about it.
Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, that's a great point. We have not at this time. However, that could be a future step when we start getting into, if the plan holds true and is still meeting the needs of the community, then we will look for those options for funding moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilman Stip.
Nathan, this has been a topic for the last five years. And several years ago, we talked about this from a capital improvement project and how Loma Linda Park really fell out of the CIP plan. And at the time, it was, well, we don't need to necessarily proceed with the master plan. Matter of fact, I had asked very specifically, have we ever abandoned a master plan that we've ever done before? And the answer is no, but we had, we abandoned it. And now because the church says, hey, we can build this building, we're going to revive this. And if I remember correctly, the cost for this park is about $5 million?
Last estimates were about $3.6 million.
Is that based on what we've already done, or is that in addition to?
That is based on what we've already done.
Okay. So we still don't have funding for it. We really don't have a funding stream. So my concern now is we're going to, we're going to have this event, which I do not ever want to say, don't get public input. But the minute that we bring this to that neighborhood, that is going to be one more signal that's going to tell them we are going forward with this master plan. I don't know that we're prepared for that, and I'm very, very nervous about it. I'm excited that we're doing community input, but I'm extremely nervous that we are going to set ourselves up for absolute failure with this community.
Yep. Mayor, Councilmember Stip, thank you for that point. We will, we're very aware and sensitive to that fact. And throughout this process, we will be clear that we're just looking to shape the park and to understand what the future of that park may look like. There is no funding source for, at this time, and it's not included in our capital improvement project list. However, in order for our department to even consider this as part of a future funding request, we need to make sure that it, that it still is, is meeting the needs of the community. And so it's really our first step. And, you know, we understand that there's no funding commitment with this, and we'll be careful with that message while, while we're doing this process.
Are you planning another master plan, since this one is now old?
No, we are not.
So we're not going to see that in next year's budget?
We are not planning a new master plan at this point. However, what the community tells us, there may be consideration for adopting or adapting the current plan, making some compromises and some adjustments to that. But we just wouldn't know until we, we get the community input.
And those would be no-cost changes, right, at the moment? Because we've already invested an awful lot in a master plan that we all, that we all very clearly know is not going to happen.
Correct. Right now, there's no request for additional funding at this time.
All right. Thanks for the extra info, thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
I have a question, Nathan, with the other slide, please. So where the church is building the multipurpose room, that's their property, is that correct?
That is correct.
And to the left of their property, the fenced-in area belongs to us or to the church?
The area right along this pathway here separates the school site from the park site.
Tell me that again. To the left, I mean, over here?
Correct. That line basically separates the two sites.
Okay, so.
Park site being on the left.
So the part that we're, that was talked about to fence is our park?
Correct.
So that would mean we would be fencing it for the church to use it, right?
Well, there are, there were a couple of benefits that were highlighted in the plan. One was to ensure safety for kids that were playing ball in here in general. There was concern with balls flying into the street because we're creating a field right next to the street. So it had dual purpose.
But it, but it was not expressed that it would be limited use at that time, correct? Because we did not know they were even contemplating the multipurpose room being built, correct?
It did contemplate construction on the, on the school site and shared use of that field area in an fenced enclosure in terms of specifics. I wasn't privy to that.
Yeah, me either. And so we did our, our part. When we were discussing this, we said we would do 250,000 worth of improvements. The church was going to do 250,000 improvements. We did our improvements. Now the church is saying, we're going to build a building. So is that building, to your knowledge, going to be available for part of our use so that would offset our $250,000 investment that we have put in there?
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, it's a fantastic question. Absolutely, the building would be available for shared use for recreation programs in the evening hours, weekends, and non-school hours, so.
Then that may be something we want to share with the residents at the open house.
Absolutely.
Because that's, that's a win-win for all of us, I think.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilman Holman?
That was the point that I was going to clarify, is it was my understanding there would, there would be some shared use of the, the multipurpose building. And that's kind of the offset for the fencing during school hours, is that there would be some, some shared.
And we did have trouble with the speeding cars around that area. I think that was one of their, one of the fears of some of the residents and their children, as I remember.
Just in reading the notes, there, there was concern for balls flying out of that area and into the streets.
Councilman Osborne?
Just, just one last thing, is that, you know, everything that we've been doing for this park has been, has been great for our citizens, and we can't forget that, because this is, what, a 50-year-old park? It, it needed renovation regardless of a collaboration with the church or not. It was, it was ready for, you know, prime to have some things fixed and rebuilt. So, you know, I'm glad that we're continuing on and keeping the conversation going. Thank you.
Councilman Holman?
Yeah, and just, to full disclosure, I do belong to St. John Vianney Parish, so maybe I've had more discussions about this than others. But I also want to point out that the swim meet would be, in a world of hurt, if St. John Vianney wasn't as generous as they are with their parking lot, so that, because the parking in that park is very, very, very limited. And that's been an ongoing thing. Park 50 years old, it's been going on for 50 years.
Thank you for bringing up that point. I think she's got.
Mayor, Councilmember Holman, fantastic point. You're absolutely right. At the end of the day, there are many benefits for this shared use agreement.
Councilman Pizzillo?
I appreciate the update, and also I appreciate taking a look at that master plan only because we have got a lot of nice amenities up north to the west. And this park, in my view, really needs at some point to be done. I know we don't have the funds right now. Would it be nice to spend some money in our older neighborhoods, bringing them up to speed? Because we've got places throughout the valley or throughout, throughout the city that are, you know, where we've sunk money. And to me, at some point, I wish we could find the money to, to get this done.
Nathan, thank you very much. All right. Now's the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item. And I do have one card, and it's Larry Gleason, and it's on the noise study. And so welcome to the dais. But as you come up, I will read to you that the council will listen to your comments and may take one of any of the following steps. Respond to criticism, request the staff to investigate and report on the matter, request that the matter be scheduled at a future agenda. And each speaker, you, Mr. Gleason, will have three minutes to speak. And just to give you the light, how the lights work, the yellow light and buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and address.
Very well. Larry Gleason, my address is 2004 North 168th Avenue. It happens to be in Pebble Creek. And I had to chuckle a little earlier when Councilmember Osborne talked about the future growth towards 303 and I-10, and I guess I would say I've arrived, because I'm less than a half mile from the intersection of those two, two freeways. I also want to thank the council very much personally for undertaking the reevaluation study. It's much appreciated. Many of us, hundreds of us, as you know, were quite disappointed last November. And I also want to thank the staff, Rebecca and her colleagues, for the efforts they've put into the study, which is, I guess, completed today, and now they're evaluating data. What I heard last Thursday, and it was a very nice presentation, there are three things that came into my mind. One is that the highest level above the A-dot threshold for sound abatement is four decibels higher. The second thing I, you know, I heard were the dates, the study, and the locations. And then the third thing I heard is that, you know, that all the data needs to be compiled with a forthcoming report. As a citizen of Goodyear and a resident of Pebble Creek, I will just share with you for the past five years, my wife and I, and we were out there two years before anyone else came, we became quite familiar with I-10, especially the months of November, December, January, February, March. We, we don't keep our windows open anymore like we used to because of the noise. We can count on being awakened quite often at 5:00 in the morning, peak rush hour traffic time. And at night, many nights, when out on our patio, we come in, because it's, it's difficult at times to carry on conversations. And so, and that's the time of year, this is the time of year we really like to be outside. But what I want to point out is that, while I appreciate the study, the study, the reevaluation study was done during the hottest time of the year, when people are indoors and not using our patios. Also, during the hottest time of the year, you have differences in sound. And it's scientifically, and it was, I think, reiterated by the consultant last Thursday, that sound does travel farther and closer to the ground during the winter time. So I, I hope the council takes this into consideration when they hear the data, because the data is coming during a time when weather temperatures do make a difference and consider what's happening to us in the cooler months of the year.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.6 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes of a regular meeting and a special meeting held on September 14th, 2015, and a special meeting held on September 21st, 2015. Item 6.2, reschedule the regular city council meeting normally scheduled on July 25th, 2016 to July 18th, 2016. The regular meeting normally scheduled on August 8th, 2016 to August 29th, 2016. The regular meeting normally scheduled on October 10th, 2016 to October 3rd, 2016. The regular meeting normally scheduled on November 28th, 2016 to November 21st, 2016. The regular meeting normally scheduled on December 26th, 2016 to December 19th, 2016, and to approve the 2016 city council meeting calendar. Item 6.3, adopt resolution number 15-1722, authorizing the release and relinquishment of an easement for an outfall sewer and treated affluent line and the associated construction easement located southeast of Yuma Road and Bullard Wash. Item 6.4, adopt resolution number 15-1724, approving, authorizing, and directing the execution of the Fourth Amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement for Pradera, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and Fourth Amendment and providing for an effective date. Item 6.5, adopt resolution number 15-1725, approving, authorizing, and directing the execution of the Fourth Amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement for Amber Meadows, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and Fourth Amendment and providing for an effective date. Item 6.6, adopt resolution number 15-1727, approving, authorizing, and directing the execution of the Fourth Amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement for La Jolla Vista, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out the intent of the resolution and Fourth Amendment and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right. Could I please have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Osborne. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lortano? Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell? Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lour?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Great. Let's go to the business. 7.1 is to consider a contract with professional sports catering to provide in exclusive concession services for the Goodyear Ballpark. Bruce Kessman, Ballpark General Manager, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to see council's authorization to enter into exclusive concessions contract with professional sports catering for the Goodyear Ballpark. And I'd first like to start off with just a brief history of the food and beverage services at the, at the ballpark, which began back in July of 2008, when the city entered into an exclusive concessions contract with Ovation Food Services. That contract provided was for initial five-year term with two one-year options, which was fully exercised and expired on July 31st of this year. That contract provided the city with a $1.3 million in capital investment, which was used to build out the concession stands and purchase all the necessary food and beverage equipment to sell concessions at the ballpark. And over the seven years, the city earned $2.7 million in commissions. And with knowing that the contract with Ovation's was going to expire, we started the selection process back in late January of this year, when we issued an RFP. Part of the proposal process was a mandatory site visit during spring training, in which we had six companies attend that mandatory visit. We gave them a tour of the ballpark, they were able to observe our concessions operations and see what our concessions operation looked like during a spring training game. From there, three companies submitted proposals for review by the evaluation team, which consisted of members of the Cleveland Indians, Cincinnati Reds, and also city staff. And the team evaluated each company's proposal based off of this following criteria, which was the company's experience and their qualifications, their financial proposal, capital investment, as well as operational maintenance plans. And what we're looking for is a company that not only offered high financial incentives, but can take our food and beverage service to that next level. And after carefully and thoroughly evaluating each of the proposals, the team unanimously selected professional sports catering. selected Professional Sports Catering. Professional Sports Catering has more than 50 years of experience on their executive team in the food and beverage industry. In fact, two of the partners that started PSC own and operate minor league baseball teams. And they truly understand the importance of having a good concessionaire as part of their organization. They believe in quality and innovative food concepts. Recently, in 2014, PSC announced a partnership with Levy Restaurants. And Levy Restaurants is one of the premier event and hospitality companies in the world. And together with PSC, they're able to combine resources and innovation with creativity and industry knowledge, which is truly a powerful combination. And we also believe that their core values match Goodyear's vision for food service, which is to take care of our fans, provide quality and exciting foods, and make a fair profit. Now, what really sets PSC apart from the other companies is the five principles that make them truly unique. Number one, baseball is all they do. Currently, they are the fastest-growing brand in baseball and grown to 23 clients since 2007, with gross profits exceeding $60 million. And more so than just baseball, they focus exclusively on these mid-sized baseball venues, which include minor league and spring training facilities. They've truly become the experts in operating food and beverage in our size ballpark. And they've also, in 2014, signed a 15-year contract with the Peoria Sports Complex. Number two, they focus on exciting foods. PSC believes that food should be a reason why people come to the ballpark, not just something that they eat while they're here. And they believe that the branding starts before the food is even made, with the branding of the portable carts, branding of the concession stands, bringing those smells, bringing the sights to the concourse to really make the food and beverage exciting, encouraging fans to visit and to purchase those food items. And with the partnership that they've had with Levy Restaurants, who operates a lot of venues within the valley, and also the past two years operating in Peoria, that they've been able to develop a large network of food trucks. And those are just a few of the ones that they have to offer. And what we'd be doing is looking at, seeing which ones really would complement our program here in Goodyear, not just for spring training, but also for year-round events. And this is just a couple of the proprietary brands that have been proven successful in all the venues that PSC has operated in. And we'll be looking at these proprietary brands to see which ones we want to introduce, and put together a plan to introduce some in the future as well. And we talked about branding, and you eat with your eyes. Here are some of the concepts that PSC has proposed to rebrand our concession stands, rebrand the carts, and making that food service exciting again. And just to show the extreme of what they have gone through, they've taken and made full rebrands of concession stands, again, to attract the fans to the food service. And to try to make you a little bit hungry here, here's a couple of the food items that they have proposed for us. And again, this is where they take just an ordinary hot dog, but they add macaroni and cheese, top it with breadcrumbs, and serve it on a pretzel bun. Again, taking that ordinary hot dog and making it truly exciting. In PSC, they focus on maximizing revenue. And of course, all companies focus on maximizing revenue. But PSC believes in delivering better top-line revenues, and that's what they believe that improves the business, versus cutting costs, cutting corners, and reducing service. And this philosophy has a proven track record and a history that it works, as they've been able to increase per caps in every venue that they've been in, from as little as 10% to as much as 45%. And focus on guest service. And this is a really big one for us here in Goodyear. As you know, each year, we do an in-park fan survey. And what we find from that is that our fan experience is unparalleled across any facility in the Cactus League. And that's something that we really pride ourselves on in Goodyear. And we were truly excited when we saw that PSC has developed this first impressions employee training, and it's a mandatory training that they put all their employees through before they can even start working. And then they also have developed the fan food feedback, and they're looking to understand what are fans, what the needs and wants of them are, so they can change their business and they can adapt to that, so they can meet and exceed our customers' expectations. And finally, we'd be partners, not just clients. PSC measures their success on how well we do. It's about our brands, it's about Goodyear Ballpark, it's about the Indians, and it's about the Reds. It's not about PSC. And they truly believe in making Goodyear Ballpark successful in every single facet. And they're committed to building that longstanding relationship with us. To go into the key elements of the contract, PSC has proposed a seven-year contract term with five one-year options. PSC has also committed $750,000 into capital improvement plan, and that would be amortized over 10 years. And the way we look at spending this capital investment is to rebrand our concession stands, rebrand the portable cart, also enhance areas of the ballpark with the mindset of how do we increase per caps and how do we continue to drive revenue. PSC is also committed to a replacement fund, and established a replacement fund of 3/4 of a percent, which will grow about $11,000 annually. And now that the city has taken ownership of all the capital equipment under the Ovation's contract, we wanted to make sure that there was a funding source in place to take care of all the future needs of that capital equipment. And finally, PSC will contribute a quarter of 1% to help offset utilities at the ballpark. And that would be estimated and projected to earn $4,000 annually. And PSC has also proposed the following commission structure over the four main categories, the concessions food, alcohol, catering events, and also the subcontractor sales. And in those top three categories, you can see that they've also set benchmarks, that if we hit those benchmarks, that we'll start earning higher percentages and higher commissions. If we take this commission structure and use the recent 2015 spring training data, that we would be projected to earn $515,000 annually. And if this contract were to go the full 12 years, that we'd be looking at earning $6.2 million. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Jason Wilson, the Vice President of Operations for Professional Sports Catering.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been with Professional Sports Catering for, well, that says our inception of 2007. But I've been with our company leaders since 1996. We're baseball owners, that's how we got started in this business. And we've sort of grown into being a food service company, because we know what, you know, the fans, what the fans really want in the customer service side of things. And that's something that we found really hard to get in the bigger food service companies. We're excited about this partnership with the City of Goodyear and the major league partners that you guys already have partnerships with. We've been in this market for two years now. I've been living and breathing spring training for two years now. I actually operate the day-to-day operations up at Peoria Sports Complex. We've also picked up West Palm Beach out in the state of Florida for their spring training facility as well. So we, as Bruce said, we're sort of experts in this size venue. We feel like our operating principles are aligned with what the City of Goodyear's expectations are on providing the best experience for your guests at the ballpark. That includes exciting and innovative food as well. Speaking of food, we've actually brought a presentation of food down to sort of give you an idea of some of the products that we look to implement into the 2016 spring training season.
Oh, my.
Chef Gino, he's got a couple of hot dog options. One is called a Cleveland Polish Boy. It's a Polish sausage with french fries, coleslaw, barbecue sauce.
My goodness.
He's also got a Cincinnati Cheese Coney, which is an all-beef hot dog with the infamous Skyline Chili that Cincinnati fans know all too well, along with some nacho cheese and onions on that. And Chef Stacy also has a couple hamburger options that we would be providing at the ballpark as well. One is a Ohio Nacho Turkey Burger. It has potato chips, it has blue cheese, it has cheddar cheese along with some onions. And then we also got some sliders we're going to roll out as well, which have American cheese, pickles, and onions on it. These are the type of products that we think the Reds and Indians fans can relate to, but we also think it's something that your Goodyear residents can get excited about as well. With this partnership, you'll be getting the biggest and best food service company in minor league in spring training baseball. We've grown to 23 teams since 2007. We also have the backing of Levy Restaurants, who's a billion-dollar company, so we've got the resources behind us to help us achieve the goals that we want to achieve. And we're excited to work with you guys. We thank you for the opportunity to provide the first-class experience for your facility. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. That was very impressive, and you are certainly a salesperson, Mr. Wilson. So, are you finished now, Bruce, or you have anything more?
Yes, and myself and Jason are here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, let me go ahead and finish this part, and I'm sure they're going to ask questions in a moment. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? All right, then could I please have a motion, a second, to authorize the staff to enter a contract with Professional Sports Catering to provide exclusive concession services for the Goodyear Ballpark? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Lortano, a second from Councilman Stip. All right, it's open for council discussion. Who would like to, Councilman Pizzillo?
Just a general question for the ballpark manager. On the concessions, we have our agreement with the Reds and the Indians during spring training. When we have events, say like the Fourth of July and home play for the holidays, how does that work on the commissions for us as far as at the ballpark? Do we, are the Indians and the Reds involved in that, or is that between us and the concessionaire at that point?
That is between us and the concessionaire. And under the catering events on this slide, you can see the percentages and the commissions that we'd be earning on those events.
So that would apply to anything that's not spring training, where we're using their operations, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stip.
Bruce, stay on the slide.
Okay.
So, two questions. One is, I know we've had some limited, I'm going to say, opening of the food venues during our events. Are we going to get the same level of participation, maybe higher, with our new vendor?
I believe we'd get a higher participation on the openings of...
Having our food services open?
Correct. And I think with the discussions with PSC, we've been looking at introducing more of the portable carts as well, and pulling some of those specialty foods out of the concession stands and putting them into the carts, which are less expensive to operate.
Okay. And then the second question is on the commission chart. Are these similar, the same? It would have been helpful to know how to do these compared to what we have been experiencing.
In one of the categories, which is the concession alcohol, we actually would earn about 2% less in that $0 to $500,000 on this contract versus the Ovation's contract. However, we make up for that in the benchmark set on the concessions food. That benchmark was set at $750,000 to start earning higher commissions. And based off of comparison of year-over-year, using the 2015 spring training data, that we would actually earn about $12,000 more under this contract with PSC.
Okay, that was my final question, thanks.
No.
I'm good.
Okay, then Councilman Holman.
Yeah, I just was curious, what is the cost of the food items compared to what, is there going to be a significant increase to our fans in the cost of the food that they're buying?
No, that was one thing that we've actually already had discussions with, and we're very price-sensitive in the Cactus League, or across the Cactus League, in understanding that we've always had one of the lowest food prices, that we want to continue offering those low, you know, the lower end of the spectrum.
Is that in writing somewhere, or is that just a gentleman's agreement?
No, the city has the right to approve all concession menus and pricing before they're published, so we have that right to approve those.
Because I'd like to see our fans protected, because that's always harsh when the cost is too high. The other question I would have, the options, is it their option to renew, or who has the option to renew?
It would be a mutual option to renew.
Mutual, okay, thank you.
Councilman Osborne?
My question was really about healthy food. So you have the food that everybody wants. Do you have the food that others desire too, whether it's the gluten-free, or the vegan, or the healthy concept that, you know, goes along with other people?
Yeah, our regular concession menus have a lot of gluten-free options already, and we would identify what those options are. We'll make sure the City of Goodyear has a list of those options as well, since, as they work with fans at the box office or at the front gates, they know as well. But some of the things that we do, when we offer a hamburger option, not only offer the hamburger option, we also give the customer the option to substitute a Boca burger for a regular hamburger. That is a vegan product. We also do the same thing with the hot dog options. Any hot dog entree we have in the menu, you can actually swap out the all-beef hot dog for a veggie dog. So we do offer those type of options. I've met with several vegan vegetarian groups over the years. The one thing they want to do is eat the same thing as everybody else, hamburgers and hot dogs. So we offer those options that they really look for. You know, obviously, we'll work with the city on what our menu options are throughout the ballpark. But yes, we do, we are sensitive to that as well, turkey burger being one of the options that we're actually bringing to the table. So, you know, every year, we try to innovate that and meet the needs of our guests, so...
Well, I appreciate that. We don't want a hungry fan, and we want to be able to have something for everyone. And so we know that there's people, part of your audience there is not going to choose some of those, so thank you.
And we also know that there's kids that attend these facilities as well, these spring training games. So we try to offer healthy kids options with a kid's meal that comes with an apple snack or a veggie snack as well, so...
Wonderful, thanks.
Councilman Campbell?
Is your food cooked on-site?
Yes, yep.
Okay, because with you starting, you're bringing up, to cut costs, you're going to put some of the food into the smaller mobile units. So you'll cook it on-site there at the ballpark, and they just move the food to there, so the food is still hot?
Yep, as much as the health department will let us, they don't let us cook a raw product to a cooked product, but we, most of the hot dog and stuff already come pre-cooked. But we do cook it in front of the guests to get the smells and the, you know, the excitement of that food product out there. So yes, we cook everything on-site, we cook it in front of the customer as well.
And y'all do offer just a plain, ordinary, normal hot dog for those, that's what they want?
We've got a jumbo hot dog on the menu. That's a hot dog with no toppings.
Right, yeah.
But then we offer a lot of options for people that want a little bit more, so...
Right, okay. Well, I will tell you that I had spoken to Mr. Torres earlier that I was going to be a no vote based on my dealings at the Peoria Sports Complex for the last two years. However, I have the highest, the highest thoughts of how you're going to be monitored. And Mr. Kesselman and Mr. Torres had assured me that they have in place ways that we can measure how our audience receives your new products, and that they will be on top of anything that is not up to what we expect. So based on that, I will vote for it, but I was a no vote up until I spoke with you gentlemen.
I will say, in the 10 years that we've been working with our partners, we've never lost a partner because of performance issues. We truly do become one-on-one with our partners, and we work with them hand-in-hand on fixing any issues that do come up, you know, as soon as possible, so...
Well, we just want our people that come to our ballpark to return. We don't want them to go away and say, "I'm not going back to that ballpark." And that's, and it's always on the food and the parking.
Yep.
So, thanks.
We want hot dogs and cold beers, though.
That's right, hot dogs and cold beer.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
I'm sorry, I just had a quick question. On the cold beers, are you going to have like other, like craft beers, or some, I guess, more fun choices?
Yes, so our philosophy is like Bruce said, we like to maximize our revenue, so craft beers do help us do that. It also, the pricing strategy we did up in Peoria, we actually have, of our 80 taps of beer, we actually have 44 taps that are craft beer options. We've also got the price point for a domestic and a craft beer the same, because we want people to decide with their palettes, not their wallets. So we do go after a lot of craft beer options. We know people from the Midwest, we know there's craft beer options up there that they're passionate about, and we'll try to bring those options down here, just like we did up in Peoria. So yes, we're not looking to pigeonhole people into four or five brands. We really want to offer a wide variety of options to enhance the fan experience.
Well, it looks like you have a very good product, and I hope, like, what you have here is what we see, because it smells absolutely delicious from here as you walked it around, so...
Thank you.
And I know that's one thing, so thank you. And I know that's one thing, so thank you, you know, y'all for bringing this to us, cause I think it's really good to get an upgrade in the food there.
I'm very pleased, after I read, uh, all of the, uh, food that you're going to offer in the partnership, I, I felt very positive about this, so I'm sorry that you had heard a, a negative, uh, experience there, but, um, I'm, I'm really looking forward to it, but I have to compliment the two chefs tonight that came in and lured us, uh, with the smell and look of that food. Uh, it was very clever marketing, uh, and we might learn from some of the marketing we heard tonight. I thought that they had a, a great marketing to the, to their company, and, uh, the city needs to do a little flair like that once in a while. So it was excellent, thanks so much. So we're ready to vote? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Welcome to Goodyear.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, go to 7.2, on business to consider authorizing the expenditure and accept public utility easements to construct a traffic signal at Elliott Road and San Gabriel Drive in Estrella Community. And we have with us Troy Tobiason, project manager to present. Welcome, Troy.
Welcome, mayor and council. My name's Troy Tobiason, project manager, here to talk about the traffic signal at Elliott and San Gabriel. I'm sorry I didn't bring food.
You're gonna have to speak closer for me to the microphone, sorry.
How's this?
That's great, thank you.
Okay. Mayor and council, my name's Troy Tobiason, I'm a project manager, engineering department, here to talk about the traffic signal at Elliott and San Gabriel. I brought with me Luke Albert, city traffic engineer, to talk about a few points. Luke?
Uh, mayor, members of the council, uh, this intersection was previously discussed and recommended for funding back in April of this year at a council work session, um, that was presented by myself with Rebecca Zuck. And, uh, the, um, installation of the traffic signal will improve overall operation at the intersection by, um, creating gaps on Elliott Road for vehicles traveling on San Gabriel, and also exiting Star Point. Um, and with that, Troy, we'll talk more about the specifics of the project.
Thank you, Luke. Project budget's $500,000, and the total cost of the project will be $500,000, so we anticipate using all those funds. Notice proceed upon award today will be approximately October 9th. There is a five-month lead time on materials, and we'll get order notes right away. There are some utility relocations that's gonna need to happen, particularly on the southeast corner. We anticipate those happening sometime in November. And in December, the underground foundations preliminary work to, uh, prepare for the poles and mast arms to be installed. We anticipate the mast arms arriving sometime late February, prior early March, and then that's when they'll be installed, and activation should happen towards the end of March, and the project should be complete by April.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
We'll go on with it, this is, you've just finished on both of these, right? Cause we have the double motions here we have to do. So your presentations are finished, I have to divide this up, so I'm just checking to make sure-
Yes.
-before I go on. Thank you very much. So, uh, we're gonna take this in two steps. So, uh, I need a motion a second to authorize the expenditure of a previously appropriated fund for the construction of the traffic signal at Elliott Road and San Gabriel Drive in the amount not to exceed $500,000. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second. I didn't hear the first one, except from, uh, okay, a motion from Councilman Pizzillo, and a second from Vice Mayor Loretta. Open for council discussion on number one. Councilman, Vice Mayor Loretta.
I wanna thank Rebecca, I wanna thank Luke, I wanna thank everybody for really working with that, and the citizens who, who really wanted to get that up there, so thank you very much.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. So we'll go on to the second one, to accept the dedication of the public utility easements from KD C N C LLC and Arizona Limited Libelty Corporation, and Estrella Community Association and Arizona Nonprofit Corporation for a traffic signal to be placed at the intersection of Elliott Road and San Gabriel. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second. I heard a, a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second from Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor.
All right, let's go on to 7.3, uh, to consider a contract change, order number three, to the Engineering Design and Construction Administration Services contract for the Water Works Engineer, Mark Holmes, Water Resource Management to, for some, manager to present. Mark?
Mayor Lord, members of the council, good evening, thank you. Myself and Brad Richards from the Engineering Department will be presenting to you this And this is for the City of Goodyear's Water Reclamation Facility, Engineering Design and Con, and Construction Administration Contract Change Number Three. Just some background information, um, in June of 2014, uh, the Soil Ocfa Treatment Site was recommissioned, um, two dated, so recharged a little over 3,500 acre feet of reclaimed water. Um, in spring of 2015, however, we started noticing a back pressure on the reclamation uh, infrastructure, and it was felt in the system, so assisted wi, a system-wide investigation ensued to look for this back pressure. Upon evaluating the entire reclaimed system, um, the SAT site meter, uh, was, uh, found to be inundated with small pieces of plastic and rubber. Uh, the picture on the right shows you the meter screen, you can see that's a mesh material, it's metal, and those various colors, and there are pieces of plastic, very small pieces of plastic and rubber that have been, uh, been caught in that screen. It appears that the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility headwork screen is not sized to remove these small pieces of debris. And this could have serious consequences on the proposed Vados Zone Injection Well Project. These small pieces of debris could become lodged permanently within, um, the injection wells, um, and permanently damage those injection wells. The picture on the right is, uh, one potential, uh, configuration for injection well, you see louvered vents or slots in that, uh, that casing there. Obviously, like the, the meter screen, you saw a previous picture, this screen could also become inundated, um, and clog, and then prevent, uh, recharge from effectively occurring in our injection wells. And that's even with the, the, the wells are gonna be designed to be back flushed, um, but the debris may be permanently lodged in those wells. So proposing a corrective action, um, the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility is currently in a design phase for the four-to-six million gallon, uh, capacity expansion. Um, the headworks facility construction, uh, which is part of that four-to-six million gallon per day expansion, um, could be expedited, uh, with a new screen to remove these smaller, uh, pieces of debris from entering the water reclamation facility, and eventually propose Vados injection wells. And that picture on the right was of the, the current headwork screen. Um, the existing headworks facility screen will remain as a redundant backup screen for emergency, uh, use. Uh, the new screen configured to remove the smaller debris from the influence stream will be added to the existing influence channel at the existing headworks facility. The picture on the right there shows you, as the influence stream comes in, that conveyor belt has it, will have a, um, a smaller screen, removing those small particles, going up the conveyor belt into the little pipe you see there, and being lifted to, or moved to a dumpster where it's in land, uh, applied to landfill. Uh, we've also noticed, um, that we've been, um, injecting, uh, large, uh, volumes of chlorine, uh, with the, uh, reclaimed water, and that's due to the fact we don't have a chlorine contact basin. Uh, currently, the reclaimed water only has a contact time within the pipe travel from the plant to the current SAT site, or the future, uh, injection well sites. Um, so we're seeing, um, some very high, um, levels of, uh, disinfection byproducts, which are governed by the, uh, Clean Water Act and our ocfa protection permit. Um, so we've been using, um, high concentrations of sodium bisulfite to decrease the levels of the byproducts, to make sure we stay within our regulatory compliance aspects. However, this increases costs for operation and maintenance, of course, and we wanna stay in compliance with our ocfa protection permit. So part of the, uh, the corrective action would be to construct a chlorine contact basin. Um, it's currently funded in the, in the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 16, um, as part of the four-to-six million gallon expansion of the plant. Um, this would require, however, the remediation of the onsite shooting range, um, and that would be per, uh, Department of Environmental Qualities requirements. The picture on the right is the, uh, the Corrigan Plant Contact Chlorine Basin. And then Brad is here to talk about the full schedule and the budget.
Good evening, Mayor Lord, council. Uh, the schedule, whoops, wrong way. There we are. Uh, the schedule shows the design and the construction timeline of the improvements, uh, that Mark had presented, uh, for the chlorine contact basin, soil remediation of the gun range, and the mechanical screen. And it demonstrates how the design phase and the construction phase completion dates have been coordinated and, uh, to align with the Vados Zone Well Project. Uh, the key milestones for the project include, starting the design of the bar screen and chlorine contact basin in the first part of October this year, starting the soil remediation, also in October this year, which must be completed by March 2016. This area needs to be ready for the chlorine contact basin construction project. Uh, the soil remediation is scheduled, uh, to take six months, and again, must be completed prior to the, can, start of the construction for the chlorine contact basin. We also wanna begin construction of the bar screen and the chlorine contact basin no later than April 2016. So this is so that the bar screen and the chlorine contact basin are operational no later than September of 2016. The Vados Zone Wells are also programmed, uh, to receive this reclaimed water in September 2016. Also notice that all construction is scheduled to be completed and closed out in December of 2016. So with all that said, um, the top, uh, portion, if you will, where we talk about the chlorine contact basin and the mechanical screen, uh, by combining the two projects and beginning immediately, we feel we'll be finished with design in Sep, in February of, uh, 2016. The design of the gun range also needs to start. The second line down with the blue shading shows, um, the three months allocated for the design of the documents and permitting for that project. The construction of the gun range soil remediation also has a three window, or a three-month This will allow us to be finished by April of 2016. Also during this time, we'll be procuring a contractor for the headworks and the bar screen, uh, construction phases. This is also gonna have to be done through an alternative project delivery, uh, we're proposing a job order contract. As we can see that April, uh, 2016, again, starting the chlorine contact basin, uh, as well as the headworks and the bar screen, this allows us, uh, to complete by September of 16, which is noted in the numerical two. And then construction closeout, um, activities will be handled in the fall of next year. Down below, excuse me, where we have the Vados Zone Well, Recharge Well, timeline for that project, we'll see that we have many activities going on in parallel. Uh, the Vados Zone Well Recharge, uh, project is now currently underway, and scheduled to be completed in March. We've also, uh, beginning the construction manager at risk procurement process, so we can get a contractor on board, uh, to begin immediately in March of 2016, again, so we can have the chlorine contact basin, the bar screen, and the Vados Zone Wells all lined up, and in sync, and ready for operation at the same time in September 2016. Uh, the financial analysis, uh, for this effort, uh, it's a bit more involved than, uh, what we typically like to present, uh, but I think it's important to note that staff is not requesting additional funds beyond the funds already approved for the four-to-six MGD expansion to complete this effort. The analysis, uh, proposed uses, uh, the approved project funds designated specifically for the four-to-six MGD expansion, and combining them to cover design and construction budget shortfalls. The proposed funds are available from the four-to-six MGD expansion design budget and the disc filter construction project that had been completed under budget through competitive pricing negotiation and unused contingency. So this is the first part of three slides. Basically, the approved CIP project funding shows what's been approved as part of the CIP program. Top line for the chlorine contact basin, a 1.4 million, that's, uh, approved for this year for construction. $740,000 was approved for the four-to-six MGD expansion design budget, and the disc filter CIP construction budget, $2 million. This leaves a total of $4.14 million. So the approved CIP contracts to date, some of them are, are requested here tonight. The chlorine contact basin, again, the budget for including the chlorine contact basin and the headworks is 1.46 million. The headworks and the contact basin remediation, design, and construction, which is the requested change order, is 343,000. The existing contract with Water Works is 699,676 dollars, and the disc filter construction contract that's currently being closed out this month was for 1.731 million. This leads to a $4.2 million, uh, required, uh, fund. We have approved 4.14 million. Through the savings that we, uh, were able to achieve on the disc filter construction contract, taking the 2 million that was budgeted and the 1.731 that was awarded, as well as the $100,000 in contingency within that construction contract, gives us, uh, the ample funds that we need to complete this effort. So if we focus on the CIP design budget and disc filter construction project, you can see that we've identified 409,642 dollars in available funds. So as I mentioned before, the current, um, Water Works contract for 699,000 had an, uh, original approved CIP budget of 740, 410. The proposed contract change order number three to the existing services with Water Works for improvements to the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility, as, uh, Mark outlined, is 343,501 dollars. So how do we go about funding that? Well, the funding contract for the change order is available, as indicated in the CIP summary. We have $40,000, uh, as available from the approved CIP budget for the four-to-six MGD engineering design, which is from the original contract. That's the difference between 740,000 and the 699,000 that we actually executed. We have the 363, uh, 368,000 that's available from disc filter construction contract, and that allows us to fund the expedited soil remediation, the headworks project. So the funds from the CIP budget for the four-to-six MGD, 40,000 plus 363, gives us 409,000 dollars of available funds. So we take the balance of the difference between the total available funds of 409,000, change order, uh, number three for 343,501, leaves us a balance of 66,141, which we would, uh, transfer to the construction portion of the headworks and the chlorine contact So as part of our recommendation, we'd like to authorize the use of the $40,000, uh, available from funds from the approved CIP budget for the four-to-six MGD engineering design contract, and the six hu, and the 368,908 dollars available from the disc filter construction contract. And this is to fund the expedited soil remediation headwork screen projects. Again, the total available funds there are 409,642. Approve the contract change order number three with Water Works Engineering for the City of Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility Project, and authorize a purchase order for contract change order number three with Water Works Engineers in the amount of 343,501. Mark and myself be happy to answer any questions, my man.
Thank you very much. Now, we're gonna take these also in two sections, all right? So I'm gonna start with number one, is could I have a motion a second to approve the 343,501 contract change order number three to Engineering Design and Construction Administration Services Contract for Water Works Engineers, Inc., to complete work required at the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility related to plant expansion and authorize, authorize the purchase order to be issued. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne, and a second from Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip.
Can you go back to the first slide of the financial, please? Okay. So, what I'm, what I'm struggling- So what I'm, what I'm struggling with understanding is you're showing a hundred thousand dollars available from the disc filter construction contract of unused contingency of a hundred thousand. So is the disc filter CIP construction budget actually two point one?
No.
Because usually we include the contingency as part of the overall budget.
The overall budget that we received for construction was two million dollars. We executed a contract for the construction of the disc filters for one point seven.
One seven three nine or three one.
Right. Within, within that, so there's the difference there, the two sixty eight, and then within the construction contract itself, we're reducing the project and we'll execute a change order for a closeout, and that will free up a hundred thousand dollars, which was unused contingency within that one point seven one.
Okay, so the unused is actually within the one point seven?
Yes.
Okay. Now, this slide makes complete sense to me, getting back to the sharpest tack comment I made earlier tonight. We've got a CIP approval of four point one, we have a new project total of four point two. Now, if you can go to the next slide. Where I'm, and then the three sixty eight is that number we just talked about?
Yes.
And the forty is what's left over?
The forty is what's left over between the original CIP budget for the design work, which was seven forty for the four to six MGD.
Okay, can you go back to the other, go back to the other slide, then?
We're see on the second line down on the top under approved CIP budget funding.
Got it.
Seven forty, and then the third row under the second grouping.
And you're taking into consideration the sixty two thousand, six thirty two overage in the chlorine basin? If you go back, under approved CIP contracts, the chlorine contact basin, basin construction contract is one point four six two.
Yeah, that's.
But under the, it's one point four. So you're already anticipating the sixty two thousand dollar overage.
Yes, the original, yeah, the original CIP funded was just for the contact basin itself, and we've reestimated that and refined the work, refined the numbers based on the work that Water Works has done so far in terms of their design, and we can add the bar screen effort in as part of that CIP. And there is a six, a sixty two thousand dollar shortfall, if you will.
Okay, so now go to the third, go to slide three. So basically, at the end of this four point two million dollar project, that's essentially what they're all adding up to, we really have sixty six thousand left for contingencies. For one, one miscalculation, what we have sixty six thousand out of a four point two million dollar construction project, because you've taken the hundred thousand out.
No, actually, we have a little bit less than that. It's closer to four, thirty five hundred dollars.
Third, that's what I thought. It's actually thirty five hundred dollars.
And what we're looking for is, as part of the soil remediation, the work that'll be done there, we're looking to recapture some of the monies that are within this change order number three to also add to that, that dollar amount as well.
Okay, so.
Yes, it's, it's tight. It's very tight.
Yeah, that's kind of, kind of an understatement. So when, because it's a government construction project, let me just say that, it will come in somewhere over thirty five hundred bucks. Something's going to change. When that happens, then what? Do we have an answer to that question?
Well, we've taken a look at this, you know, there's no guarantee.
I know, we've, we've, you probably penciled it out as far as you can.
You know, the disc filter worked out in our favor, you know, we were able to capture a large sum of money there as well. Far more complicated job. The good thing is we're confident about the disc or the contact basin, it's, it's a contact basin made of concrete and steel, and that's, it's pretty very straightforward. And we've had them take a hard look at that, but that was how we were able to cobble together to get these improvements to the plant to support the Vado Sonne well project.
I'm not trying to find a way not to do it, but I need to be assured personally, and I don't know about the rest of the council, that we, when we uncover something at the shooting range, when they dig up that mound behind there and they find fifty five gallon drums of something that nobody knew were there, because that's what we did back in the day, we have thirty five hundred dollars left. So how can I approve this? I need some, somebody to tell me that we've got money somewhere that's going to come through for us at the end of the day. Otherwise, we would never approve any project with thirty five hundred bucks left over, especially four point two million.
Four million dollars. Would like to address that?
Yeah. Flip a coin?
Oh.
It is. Yeah. Yeah, I'd misread something. Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm kind of delaying. Bob was going to come up, and I thought, no, I probably ought to. You, you have asked an extremely good question. We've been through this extensively as a staff, and the answer to your question will be that at this point in time, we've been assured on these costs, but because of your, the drums that could exist, the good news is that this is in the wastewater fund that the operating fund does have about a thirteen million dollar fund balance, some of which is programmed, but not down to the level that this would get. Most of it, which is programmed, I should say, but with the timing of it, that that would be one option, and the other one is, is that there's another phase of this project coming in two years that is in the CIP that is, I believe, Brad, how much is left after this? Five million, is it? For the?
Five point eight million to finish.
Right, we have five point eight million funded in a couple of years to finish the, the upgrading of that plant to six million gallons per day, and that'll, I've been assured we can do that for that, so that'll kind of be where they would have to balance that in as part of that number. And that's a conversation we've been having for the last month or so, I think, that we've had several conversations. So it's a great question. I'd love to give you a better answer than I've given you tonight. We've had the conversation, and it's all just part of that total bigger project that'll go over a several year period of time.
Is this the kind of thing that can be funded from the manager's contingency?
I would very much.
Before to get to that.
If it had to, it could, but I would very much prefer not to, because it's an enterprise fund activity that we would like to keep self-sufficient, so I would say that falls quite low on the list of how we would try to attack it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilman Pizzella.
I think they'll come in with the thirty five hundred, at least that's what their estimates are, so I'm good to go.
Any other questions? I have a question. Councilman Osborne.
There's, there's something I've learned with this little project that I've been doing called building a jewelry store, and change order costs me money. It's two words that I've, a phrase that I don't really care for, and I, I really, I really hope that you guys can stick with this. It's very, very concerning. I'm glad that there is contingency still within the water department, but you guys are really going to have to sharpen those pencils to stay on track.
Mayor, if I might, there is, within the change order, there's a forty thousand dollar contingency, and there is also, the monies for the four million, much of that work is already completed and closed. So it's not a thirty five hundred from four million. It's still a very small amount in terms of the large numbers, but it's one point six million with thirty five hundred, so it's order magnitude less, a little bit less.
Any other questions? Councilman Campbell.
I have a question for Mark, please, regarding this SAT site meter. Is the new, the bar screen going to replace what we currently have, and what are you doing to keep the screen clean now before all of this other is built? Because it's obviously clogging up, and it's just going to keep clogging up.
The meter is actually within the infrastructure pipe at the SAT site, which that screen's there to protect the meter from anything that may get through the system. The headwork screen, once replaced, again, it's going to capture the very smallest particles.
Right.
It goes on a conveyor belt, so it's continuously on a conveyor belt up to the top, and then it goes into a tube that feeds over to a dumpster, which goes to a landfill. So it's continuously running as, as wastewater's coming in.
I just, I just don't want it to clog up down the line, because then that's an additional expense.
Correct, the, probably the technical aspect, Brad could explain better, but the headworks is continually cleaning itself as it's, as it's going in the conveyor belt, continually cleaning the material off, which goes into the dumpster.
Right.
And then a dumpster is emptied several times a day.
Right, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I, before we go on to the vote, I do want to say, Brad, that was well done. You knew your subject matter, and you, I think he answered the questions quite well with the information he has, so kudos. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. So now, let's go down to the, are we on the second one? We haven't done that one yet. Here we go. Could I have a motion, a second, to authorize the use of forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty four available funds from the approved FY16 capital improvement plan budget for the four to six million gallons per day engineering design contract? Some move? And the three hundred and sixty eight thousand, nine hundred and eight ninety four, that's okay, I understand. You're, you're ready to quit. Available funds from FY15 carryover funding from the disc filter construction contract to fund the expedited, expedited. Expedited, there we go, came out soil remediate, you can tell I, yes, I know, the remedy, and the head, the headworks screen projects. Do I hear a motion and a second?
Second.
Was that from Councilman Holman or Councilman Campbell? Councilman Campbell said the motion, the second was Councilman, I, Osborne, open for council discussion. Councilman Stipp.
I would like to request that if we don't meet this, it's going to hit the transfer list, and we're going to see the transfer list three months later. I'd like to know about it when it happens. Need to. Not that I don't have faith in you guys, but there's a fifty five gallon drum in there, I just know it.
You know it. All right, are we ready for vote?
Larry wants to say something.
Oh, Larry, go ahead.
Actually, I think that's a fair comment, and we were going to talk about it in three weeks when we talk about the, the, the financial statements. One thing we in, in the budget side of the equation are working on is a process, we're going to separate the financial reporting from the budget transfers and get the budget transfers to you on a monthly basis so that we don't run into that situation. So I just, because you brought the comment up, I thought I would let you know how we plan on addressing that.
All right, are we ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right, does council, you have any comments, combination reports, current events? Yeah, Councilman, Vice Mayor Loretto.
I attended this month, it's Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so I attended the lighting the Capitol purple for that, which was very interesting, and they do have a lot of information that they're going to start distributing on this issue free that we'll be able to download shortly to put out in our public buildings for our citizens, which is really nice. And I do want to apologize to the fire chief. I tried so hard to make it back from downtown, and it went long, and I didn't get back up onto the hill till eight thirty, so I was trying, and I do apologize for not making that event.
Any other comments? All right, now for the city manager, I know that you have some summary and some follow-up, so go ahead.
I do have a, just a couple of announcements, and one of those is the mid-decade census count started on October first, so we're just now getting ramped up on that. So far, they let us know they're on schedule, just a few days into it, five days into it. We are continuing to promote the census with ad signs displayed at fifteen intersections across the city, and the mayor has even helped to produce a video to help spread the, the message on the census. Again, we want to remind residents that it's important to answer their doors and be counted, but also please be safe and ask for the identification of the numerator when they do come to your door. And then last, but definitely not least, I have the pleasure of introducing to you our new director of Public Works, Javier Sadevich. He has many years of experience in the Public Works area, thirteen in the city and county of San Francisco, here more recently on the West Valley. He's had ten years between Peoria, Arizona, and Glendale, Arizona. He has a bachelor's degree and a master's of business administration from the University of Phoenix. He also is a PE, professional engineer registration here in Arizona. So I wanted to give him an opportunity just to say hello to you very quickly. We are very glad to have him. We stole him from Glendale.
Well, welcome to your first meeting.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just want to let you know that I'm very excited to be here, and I'm ready to start working. In fact, just during the discussion about the project for a utility facility, I wanted to get up and have some input, but I don't think I would have cleared things up. I think I would have just added some confusion. But again, thank you, and I'm looking forward to being part of the great things that are going to happen with Goodyear over the next several years.
Javier, we're looking forward to, to working with you, too. I was very impressed today at GEO. In fact, weren't you impressed by the people around the table, all the employees that were there this morning at GEO?
Mayor and Council, yes, certainly. It's, the culture here is one of cooperation and teamwork. It's, and it's something that our employees actually practice.
We have some really great new employees coming onboard, extremely well qualified and so versatile. It was, it was just amazing. So thank you, and we, we know you're going to enjoy Goodyear.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right, the future meetings will be ten nineteen, will be a work session at five. On the twenty sixth of October, will be a work session at five that evening, also regular meeting at six PM, and then on November second will be a work session at five PM. So, let me go join the work session. Okay, before I adjourn, the next meeting will be a joint work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission on October nineteenth, and that's always enjoyable. And I have to tell you, they are really looking forward to it, they always do. So that's October nineteenth with, with the planning and zoning, it's a combination. No further business from anybody? Well, then we're going to just adjourn this meeting, meeting adjourned.